Now at seven oh two, I guess we'll call the meeting or if we can stand with the touch.
Fudge Legions, Mounts. United States of America, Republic of the United States, one nation under God, in the name of justice.
Jump to go. Okay, roll call.
Sample of both, after the Carson's thing.
Here.
Nick?
Here.
That again?
Here.
Martinis?
Here.
Here.
Here. All right, any announcements or correspondence? All right. Approval of the August seventh, two thousand twenty-four planning and zoning meeting minutes as presented.
So.
Number first?
Second.
Second? Roll call.
Yes, yes, Mary, let's see, Martinez?
Yes.
Turner?
I'm staying.
Yes. All right. Do we have any public comment written down?
No, your honor.
Okay. Full business PCB two four oh seven consideration or request of special use for assisted living memory care facility located in property and commonly known as nine nine one east route one seventy-three. PIN number zero two one five two zero 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 five.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let the record reflect that this is a continuation of a public hearing being held pursuant to public notice in accordance with state statute and all applicable local ordinances. Mr. Chairman, this matter comes before the commission again. As you recall, at the last meeting, there was a public hearing for a proposed assisted living facility. The applicant, as you well know, has is requesting a special use, as you know, of the zoning classification for R one. All assisted living facilities do require a special use and also site plan review. I will not go through my staff report again, as we've gone through it several times. I know the chairman just wanted to afford every commissioner the opportunity to have some input and provide some input as relates to this this case. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the commission has. The actual applicant is actually here this evening. There has been some additional slides which I can walk you through, providing some additional information on the landscaping. I think the applicant has augmented some additional landscaping pursuant to the request of the planning commission. There are some slides that demonstrate what that landscaping would look like, and are some additional architectural modifications pursuant to staff's requests, some additional brick. So I'll be more than happy to walk pursuant to your, I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, if we if we can go through those additional slides and the and the changes since we last met.
Sure. Right, for the applicant to walk you through each slide.
Sure, absolutely.
So I'm gonna allow the applicant maybe to walk you through each slide. The different, these are the first slide, additional landscaping, so I'm not sure from the applicant's team who wants to walk you walk us through this additional landscaping. This is just, again, reflection of what the landscaping would look would look like, so I'll defer to representative.
If if there's anybody who'd like to speak tonight on anything with this hearing, please stand up and be sworn in. Raise your right hand. Thank you.
So per request, we wanted to get you more of a visualize exactly what the type of landscaping is being requested. We want to try doing everything we possibly can to make it the most aesthetic as possible, to make it look very home-like. We want don't want any type of commercial type feeling. So this is one of the slides here. I believe this is the back east corner, is that correct? So back east corner of the building. Okay. That's another picture of the back, just kind of trying to do a layer of different type of evergreens and different trees in itself as well. Oh, okay, yeah, so that's pretty much what we're trying to, you know, gain as far as what feedback that we have, just to make sure that the building is gonna be presentable for the residents that are living inside, which is very important to us. We want to make sure that they're looking at something very nice, and of course, we want to appease the neighbors too, to make sure that the neighbors are happy as well too.
Okay. All right, we'll go through some questions, Ms. Carsonson.
Was is the wall there added? Was that added because originally those other trees that are to the left of this picture?
We need a two D wall for.
Right.
One was added when we when we had to add.
And so are the evergreen-like trees that are on the?
That's true.
Yeah, were those ones that added that are on top? Those were added. Okay, that's my only question.
Ms. Mish?
Um. Is there land that is still vacant beyond this that backs up to this neighborhood?
To the to the north of this property is vacant land that is, I believe. North, north and west.
North and west, a little bit there's land.
Yes, but that there's there's a property to the west, and then to the north of this property, is that part of that property? Does it do an L shape around it? Or is that or is that? DNR? Right, and that's where it ends. So to the west, there's a residential lot there.
Right, vacant lot, unincorporated. Petters, there's a lot there to the west, again, owned by Mr. LaValle. That is actually unincorporated.
Right, and that's and that has residents on it.
Right.
Not vacant. Right, okay.
That's all.
Okay, Ms. Mannigan?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Martinez?
Going back to the question of vacant lots, was this project ever proposed on a different lot within our community, within the village?
No, there wasn't. This applicant, this applicant has not never come before this commission or the village board on another property. I have been working with the applicant for probably the past, I would say, three years, and we did show them numerous sites throughout the village, throughout the village. It was probably over a year and a half, I'd say at least a year, before they were able to basically discuss having discussions with this owner for this parcel. They looked at numerous properties throughout the village, and based on the discussions they had with those property owners, nothing, nothing really, basically, the price points were just too high.
Well, I appreciate that, and that's that's information that I'd like, that it's Mr. Director that's now on public record that we did make an attempt to have something like this proposed on a different lot, and obviously because of price point, it wasn't available. Uh, that's that was mine.
Mr. Chair.
So just a question regarding new, the new information. So the hedge, the new hedgerow tree line there, that is on the west east side of the property, is that accurate? East and north, so it boxes in the whole develop the development in question from last time, and then? And what what's the height of those going in? They're eight feet high?
Could you come over the microphone?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Please do me a favor, just state your name for the record.
I'll be here of my civilian share for the project.
Thank you.
So those, I'm speaking not, so those trees that you guys are putting in that row of tree line, when they're planted, how high will they?
It will be eight.
Eight foot tall. Okay, and then the drive lane that was required to be put in by the the fire department, that is also on the east side of the property?
It will be on the west side.
West side of the property. Okay.
No. East, east side of the property, west side of the arbividos, but east of building, in between the two.
Of on the property. That's what I thought. Okay, cool. So then there's eight foot tree line, a little bit of a buffer, and then a berm and more trees. Yeah.
Every piece, I'll give you the tree line.
Mm-hmm.
And then you got the lot of landscaping from the top of the road to the to the street.
Yep.
And then on the top of the road, you can add the road. And then start seeing some families.
Okay, great. Thank you for that info. I just wanted to confirm that it was, I was reading what I saw there. That was all new information last time. That's all I had.
Okay, to be fair to the public, if you have, anybody else has any more public comment for this? You'd like to come up? State your name.
My name's Vince Accardo, and I live in Red Wing View. And I'm gonna start off by saying, I don't like bullies, and I don't like being misled. I'm reviewing a petition that's been going around. I'm probably sure you guys got one. It's it's been going around by Mr. Opal, and it holds no merit. Petitions really don't matter because they're either the opinion of a group or one individual's side. And what this petition saying is, number one, it's a slap in the face to you guys because there's lighting being mentioned and garbage being mentioned. Apparently, we don't have the confidence in these boards, but this facility is a great match for our community. I said that before, and I'll say it again. The game changer that came to my attention was last week, that these people now own the property. They bought it. So what I'm looking now is I am looking out for my community, not for my self-interest. There's ten houses that are being affected by this. Out of those ten houses, five are stealing land from this company. They've illegally purged into this property and taken it over to increase their own backyard. So my thought is, why are they appeasing it? Why are they fighting it? There's a self-interest here, and I don't go for that. And I don't care if they get mad at me. I don't really care. It's not right. You don't steal. And for the rest of the community, you can see there's nobody here. It really doesn't have that big an effect on us. The other thing is, if this does not pass, it goes out of your hands, whether you know it or not. These guys own the property. It's already zoned residential. Okay? Now.
We're gonna go one at a time, okay?
These guys could build whatever they want as long as it's residential, and it takes you guys out of it. They gotta deal with the village. So I said at the very beginning, I've always been worried about Plan B, and I've already said that this land for single dwelling homes is not affordable. Anybody knows construction realized that a two hundred thousand dollar house five years ago, six hundred thousand dollar bill, can't afford it, but you can get money from the government and help pay for half the cost. And that's what I'm afraid is coming next. So I really think that this board shouldn't be taken in by petitions. You guys should look at the facts. This man's been working his butt off, and you guys know what you're doing, and I and I know a couple of you really know what you're doing. So for the sake of Red Wing View, you know, traffic is traffic. We have one hundred eighty-two homes. One hundred and seventy-two will not be affected by this, but if you multiply the amount of traffic we have just in our subdivision over the last ten years, there's cars all over the place. Antioch is growing, and I don't think that this here is gonna make a big difference with a little bit of traffic, but what it does bring to Antioch is we're gonna be one of the only suburbs up here that has a class act, five-star senior assist assistant living. We will be the only ones, and you know what? Old people need help all over this country. Maybe this will catch up. Go to Grace Lake, go one into Lake Villa, but we have an opportunity in Antioch to be the first, and I think this is gonna be a big difference because Antioch is growing. I mean, we don't need any more funeral places or auto parts stores, but this facility here is gonna be non-aggressive. I can't see senior citizens getting jacked up on Jericho on a Friday night and storming our neighborhood. Okay, I don't I don't think it's gonna be noisy. Everything that claims is going on in here, I don't see it. I DJ nursing homes all over Lake Howling, and you know what? I love old people, and I think these old people deserve a break, but I don't mean to be rude. I have to go. Today's my daughter's birthday, and I'm missing the dinner. So you guys do what you gotta do, but I really believe that our community is not, they're gonna be good neighbors to us. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So he left, so I'll speak to you. First of all, I spoke last week.
Can we have your name?
Sorry, Columbus, one two six two blue hair in circle.
Thank you.
One of the ten homeowners that'll be directly affected by this building. You know, it's frustrating that he just comes in, throws his bomb, and leaves. You know, if anybody has an ulterior motive, he just spoke right now that he DJs at these types of facilities, and he is a DJ, so there there's the interest. We have no interest. We have nothing to gain from this. My husband mows some of the property that's behind our land to get the weeds out of our yard. That's all he's ever done. I don't know why he thinks I can increase my property because obviously I cannot. So I'd like to just go back to the picture, please.
Would you please come up here and speak to the mic? Thank you.
So that brick wall gonna be put there? Is there gonna be a brick barrier, a brick berm that's looking?
It's a retaining wall, yes.
Yeah, it's. So. So what will be on the east property line that I will have direct visibility to? It's not this. What? So how high is the berm? Okay. But I need you to understand, this elevation, you're showing this. This is an accurate inaccurate depiction of what our view would be. Our houses are like this. I am looking down on this property. This picture, you're reflecting this view from like this. It's inaccurate. This is not the view from my backyard. It's flat, and we are elevated because of. So this is inaccurate. This is an accurate view of what I'm gonna be looking at in my backyard. So, you know, and and the other depiction too, like you're showing this elevation. Unless you're building this building up on some pedestal, these this new rendering to me is inaccurate and not a not a clear representation of what's gonna be there. So I'm not trying to be difficult, but I need to understand, this is my backyard. It's gonna affect my property values, not his. You know, I I need I need somebody to listen to what I'm trying to say. It's not that I'm here to, you know, pick on somebody or.
We're we're up here and we are listening.
Okay, well, that that's really all I had to say, and I know my husband wants to provide an update on the petition. And yeah, garbage is an issue. Where's the garbage gonna be at this facility? Is it gonna be along the east side in my backyard? Where where are the dumpsters gonna be? Like, where would they be?
Excuse me, we're not gonna have a back and forth.
Okay.
So you have you have an issue? You have an issue with the garbage?
In the petition, yes.
Okay.
You know, again, the other person comes in, throws this bomb, walks out, and, you know, that's not fair.
Right.
That's all I.
I understand. Thank you very much. If you have a response to the garbage, if you please step up to the mic.
The the kitchen, delivery, everything is towards the west, and the garbage can picked up and picked up all.
Do you have something on the plan showing us where your dumpster would be on the west side? It is not, it's not depicted that. Transformers. How are they gonna get to it? Right next to the parking lot there? So there's gonna be an entrance there, and it's gonna be fenced in. Mike, Michael? Is that area where the transformers, it doesn't, it doesn't specify garbage and transformers in that specific area. If that's what it is.
My understanding that enclosures will be located.
Exactly.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. It's just not depicted on the on the drawing, so, all right.
We also confirm where that retaining wall is, because now we've heard two.
The retaining wall is that what what I saw the second time is that's from the west, the northwest corner looking east. So now that the the picture that they showed is in the northwest corner looking east. So that's the north side of that building, correct? Okay, so the retaining wall ends around the corner on the northeast corner. Ends there. That's what allowed you to bring that driveway around that north side. Okay. Would you like to have a opportunity to speak? Thank you.
I'm Robert Opel, twelve sixty-two Blue Hair in Circle. I have impeccable integrity, and I'm not fooled. One of my leaders called me. Um. We're not gonna gain any ground talking about Vince's self-interest of DJing. I've already said my self-interest, gave it away at the challenge of this little shenanigan, sir. I wanted to provide an update on the petition, that's the big word. The petition, we're now up to a hundred and five signatures. And forgive me, but I I felt as though Mr. Garrigan's subordinate, who's no longer with the village, had told us early on in conversation and in the HOA board meetings with Red Wing, which I'm the president, that if there was buy-in from the residents immediately affected by this development or lack of, if there wasn't enough votes for it, that it wouldn't go through. Yet, in the petition, we have all ten homeowners and their families have signed it. We don't want it in my backyard. If there's any question about any of us stealing land or anything else, just to convey the rodent and weed control issues that we've had from that property over the past, we've mowed back a little bit just to
Not an issue with the.
the rodents out of there, and and if anything else, we've helped property value increase for the landowner. I do have some questions because it's not intuitive on how to find these drawings on the village side if they're there or elsewhere, but we've yet again got a note changed today. So from the easement, how far up is it before the first set of trees? Do you know that? Got the answer for me? From the easement of the property line, you say by the way, how in the the rental property that the question to discuss a year from the easement, it's a ditch and drainage.
This is still, this, yeah, this is, this is not a back and forth with them. So we're we're here. This is not a back and forth with them. You wanna ask a question, you direct it to the board, and then we can give them the opportunity.
I'll, that is my question. I'd like to know how far off the easement, and hopefully you'll allow them to respond.
Which which easement for the east side?
Easement, the east side of this development.
Yes.
Proposal, the east side of it, there's a ditch and easement separating our home from this property.
Yes.
I'm curious, from this, the bottom line of the ditch, and easement's usually about six feet to twelve foot wide, if I'm not mistaken, thereabouts, how far away from that easement is the first row of bushes and whatever berm is being forecasted? Or proposed.
Okay.
So if they can respond to that, I have nothing further other than that. We don't want it.
Thank you. From from the property line, which is where your berm starts, that's the easement area where we have plantings that's happening, correct?
There is no easement in a
For plant, for for plantings and and your berm, for for protection to the neighbors, we can call it an easement or not, whatever. It's, that's where we're giving a little protection to the neighbors. What is what is that width of that strip for that space with the plantings?
I'm just for thirty feet or the or fifty feet.
Fifty feet?
Fifty to sixty, uh, forty, forty. Forty to forty-five. The building is sixty, about sixty feet, and we got twenty feet of fire line. So you get about forty.
You're about right. Okay, it's about forty feet. I see the the lane that's true, that's put in place. Yeah, it's about forty feet. So it's about forty feet of plantings. So the berm starts at the property line. And then it grows, and then that's where the plantings are all within the berm, and from there to protect and kind of shield you from them, them from you, give them a nice look on the interior of of the building, and and obviously, you would a better look of towards a single-story building, so. Okay.
Michael, can we ask the gentleman another question? He was asking where you can find these drawings and rendering on the village website?
The village website, or again, anybody who has any requests for staff, just please contact me. I'll be more than happy to be responsive over the plans.
It is available on the website.
I believe it's not available on the website, but I'll be more than happy to send the plans again if they don't, if you can't find those.
Mr. Chair, I think we have another individual that'd like to speak, and I don't believe he's been sworn in.
If you wanna speak tonight on this matter, then come up and raise your right hand and be sworn in.
Yes, I do. I'm Mike Babitz.
Thank you.
ICZ six oh five Indian Trail, Antioch, Illinois, an Antioch, Illinois resident since two thousand and five, been associated with the village for many, many years prior to that with former mayor Ray Todd. I work at a senior. And even though this would be, some people would say this would be in competition with our facility, which is Libertyville, I don't see it as competition. I see it as filling the need. I see families, I work with families, and a lot of our families that come to Libertyville come all the way from Western McHenry County, DuPage County, Cook County, because they're not finding their need filled. We have people in this village that want to have their family close to them. And to have a project in Antioch like this, when I first saw that this was being considered tonight, I was thrilled. Because right now, we've got a couple of senior buildings that are apartment buildings. They can't provide kind of care that this facility could. I am a little bit familiar with those. I work at Libertyville Manor, in Libertyville. We've been in since for over seventy years. We actually began in Lake Villa. So we moved to Liberty. And there is a definite need that I've got people in my neighborhood, we've got family members who need to be placed. Some of them right now are going over the border. There are a number of facilities that have been built. Tadok Lake has got one. And there's another one out in Lake Geneva that was recently built. Why do our people have to go overboard? They should be able to stay in the community where a lot of these people have lived all their lives. And they shouldn't have to finish their last years. And if you've ever been to a memory care unit, a lot of them don't remember what they had to do, let alone their entire life. And at least their family members can help them to remember them and take them for a while and have them in the community where they lived all their lives. So personally, I realize I haven't been here. I understand talking to Mike today, this is like the third heap hearing where this has been discussed. If I had known, I would have been at the other two. I actually. If I had known, I would have been at the other two. I actually left the meeting, another meeting early, get a fellow important assistant. And I would like to see this program and this facility move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has any other questions for the petitioner? For us? Okay, I will entertain a motion for this petition.
I make a motion for PCB 24-07, consideration of special use for assisted living and memory care facility located at property number 991, East Route 173, ten number 0215200-005, approved with the stipulations about and the additional. And the, the chain.
That's already in.
That's in there, yes.
Second.
Do we have a first from Manigan and a second from Carsonson? Roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
So I'll, I'll own this one. So I, I think, Mr. Chair, generally a vote's a vote. You vote, I nay or abstain. I do think that, I did not say that before the meeting. This is a new commissioner. If you want to give a little liberty, Mr. Chair, I don't think it'd be a problem. But going forward, if we could just always make our comments before the vote, because it's got to be I, nay, or abstain if you're here.
I, I give you the opportunity to have something to say after, after we get done with the vote. So go ahead and put your position.
I.
Yes. Yes. Go ahead. If you'd like to give us a
I, with a heavy heart, I made the decision thinking long-term and based on the fact of not only the need of our community, but also we're in a housing crisis. And so in theory, this opens up 70 homes in our community and that, that's the voice.
All right. Thank you. So motion passed.
Can I say something as well?
Yes.
So just food for thought, just a comment here. So we as a planning and zoning commission are an advisory board. We're not elected officials. We're appointed. We are advising, as this just passed, for it to go then forward to the village board. Those are elected officials. And then if you guys would like to take that up to them, that's where that happened, would, would happen in this. So just wanted to make sure that was clear.
And, and, and a lot of what we do up here is to improve things for the neighbors, for residents that are affected, for other people who have a very direct connection to a project that's coming into the village. So a lot of the changes that have been done in three meetings came from here to help out with that. And to keep that very, very tight and try to make it very nice as a neighbor. And obviously we're working with the petitioner to try to make that happen as nice to the community too. I appreciate it. Okay. Yes.
That's the PCB 24-07, with the approval of the site plan review, which is giving listed living and memory care to the property family we've done. East Route 173, I'd motion to approve it with the force of the
Is there a second? First by Manigan, second by Carsonson. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. All in favor. So we go on to new business. PCB 2409, consideration of tax amendment, the village zoning ordinance. Title 10, creation of a section 10-5-14, establishment of regulations related to residential and commercial light.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, let the record reflect that this is a public hearing being heard, public in accordance with state statute and all local applicable ordinances. Mr. Chairman, this matter comes before you this evening for a proposed tax amendment with regards to a new lighting order. Just with regards to context, what precipitated this was actually an issue with some residents in the billboard. And staff has been working on that as I, as I've discussed with the chairman. There may be some other code enforcement opportunities to address the issue with regards to the billboard. But nevertheless, I think this is a perfect opportunity to look at our lighting ordinance as a, as the chairman has outlined several times, the village has also been very sensitive historically to lighting. And believe it or not, going through our ordinances within our municipal code, the only real current code that we have that specifically addresses lighting is within our site plan review ordinance. I think this is an opportunity to highlight what our current regulations are. But again, for our state plan review, as you know, generally it's applicable for new development. Doesn't really applicable for existing businesses, existing, whether it's a multifamily project or a large manufacturing project or a new commercial project or maybe an old, maybe an old retail center that we haven't really looked at in many years. Or even some, or billboards or signage. We, we don't really have comprehensive regulations for lighting. So I thought it would be a perfect opportunity to maybe revisit our lighting ordinance and really actually have a unified, comprehensive lighting ordinance that would be more sensitive to some of our lighting challenges. So again, in a very, a very brief summary, our current site plan review ordinance, as you well know, as we've discussed it many times, we, we, we require photometric plans for all new development. We have a half a foot candle illumination level. So if you come in and new, new development comes in, whether it's a commercial or industrial, they have to show that the foot candle illumination at the property line is a half a foot candle. They also, as the chairman's already outlined many times, all the lighting fixtures have to, what we have incorporate a complete cutoff 90 degrees. So they basically had to be directed 90 degrees down. So theoretically, if you're an adjacent resident or adjacent business, you can't see the light source. Basically, it's a fixture, the light source is incorporated within that fixture is what we call a complete cutoff. That's what we require from all new development. And we also, we have general language in there that you can't have what we call lighting spillage. So in other words, what I, in simple terms, what we call light trespass. You know, I understand what trespass is, but theoretically, our ordinance prohibits you from having light trespass onto an adjoining property under, under the village's site plan ordinance. But this again is for new development. Question is, what is our current regulations for existing development? What is the village's recourse against that? So based on that, I wanted to take this opportunity and kind of walk you through that. I believe you all have copies of the actual proposed ordinance. I took a couple numerous municipal ordinances, did a fair amount of research on municipal ordinances throughout the Chicago metropolitan area, Lake County, looked at different villages ranging from Munderline to Lindenhurst to Lake Villa to Deerfield. And I tried to incorporate a number of those applicable lighting regulations into this new ordinance. So I can walk you through the ordinance or if you want to ask specific questions, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to you. How, how you would like me to proceed as it relates to that? Do you want me to walk through the whole ordinance or do you want, I have a brief PowerPoint. I could walk you through it very briefly.
Let's, let's go through your PowerPoint and go from there.
So the major changes that are highlighted in this ordinance, for the first time, I've incorporated what we call maximum average. So we all, we have a minimum half a foot candle at the property line, but we don't have what, basically an average. So we can incorporate like what, what average has to be for a proposed development or proposed property or existing property. Also, there'll be a maximum. So we, we would now for the first time incorporate a maximum foot candle illumination level. A lot of villages have that. So there'll be a maximum foot candle illumination level for existing properties and new developments. And also an aspect that we, we do not incorporate is what we call an average minimum. So that's simply you just take the average subdivided by the minimum to try to come up with a, what we call a illumination level where there's no dark locations. There's basically tried to the best of our ability, have even illumination throughout the whole site. That's also a current trend that you see in a lot of lighting ordinances. So that's being proposed for the first time. Also, what we're requiring is in this language is some just general language to give staff a little more power for, from a code enforcement perspective. So again, going back to that general concept of light trespassing, making sure that an existing business or existing industrial building doesn't trespass, have that lighting spillage onto adjoining properties. I, I can't tell you how much time I've spent in my 25 year career working on lighting. Lighting is probably one of the biggest issues as it relates to physical development when it comes to community development. In, in many cases, I've spent an inordinate amount of time working with neighbors or residents complaining about a, a light source. This light source is in my, is in my back window and I can't sleep. That's a very common complaint that I, that I experienced as a community development director or a planner going back many years. So what this proposed ordinance does is provide staff some general tools to try to address that problem. So this has, we incorporate some general language prohibiting that light spillage, that light trespass onto adjoining properties. And again, you know, generally we have this concept of something being grandfathered. It was legally non-conforming. We have no legal recourse. This proposed ordinance does provide, if in fact it does constitute a true nuisance, there would be potential to have some recourse to work with that owner who has that light pollution or that light spillage onto an adjoining property to try to give us the ability to address that. So not only for new development, but for existing development. It gives the residents of Antioch more, you know, basically more discretion to work with staff to try to address some of these lighting issues. To be fair, I don't get a lot of, recently, I haven't had a lot of lighting complaints recently, but I think as we see more and more development in the village, I think this will be a, it will be an issue that will become more pressing. As you know, we do have some corridor areas that do have a fair amount of illumination, obviously. On Route 173, as you come into, you know, the village with the car dealerships, there's a tremendous amount of illumination. I'm not going after the car dealerships here, but there's an opportunity to maybe revisit some of our current standards as it relates to illumination. There's this whole movement called, what we call the dark sky movement. And this is not really per se a dark sky ordinance. I think that may be a little too aggressive for those of Antioch because we, we are pro-development. We want economic development. But there are dark sky aspects which are incorporated into this overall plan. So I did try to introduce some dark sky aspects into this lighting plan to try to be more sensitive. I mean, I, I showed you, I, I'm just remarkable that we lose over 1 billion birds a year generally from light pollution. Basically, birds are killed because of light pollution. They're basically killed, basically, you know, flying into buildings and light sources, especially this time of year. There's a major loss of avian welfare as it relates to light pollution. So that, those are some of the changes that I'm incorporating. Again, still incorporating a complete cutoff. So all lighting fixtures will have to be, basically have a complete cutoff, directed down 90 degrees. The light source will be incorporated within the box. None of that's being changed. I also incorporate some, you know, just generally language about prohibiting certain types of attention getting devices, the blinking lights, things like, you know, like you see that we, we have some general language in our sign ordinance, but we don't have a comprehensive regulation prohibiting that type of approach. I know the village board hates that type of attention getting lighting. So I tried to codify that, incorporate that in this ordinance. So that's a very brief summary of what this proposed ordinance incorporates. I really, I'm looking for a general discussion this evening. I'm looking for the discussion from the commissioners of what direction you would like to go in. Do you believe A, is there a problem? B, is it appropriate to look at a, a new lighting ordinance? And C, what proposed modifications or changes should be incorporated within this document? So with that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Mike. So here we go. Conversation. Ms. Carsonson.
Um, my question might be for Mr. Turner. How restrictive is this? Are people generally building within this ordinance?
Loaded question. So I'm excited about this conversation tonight. I don't think, yeah, I think it's, it's, I typically personally work with large cities. So it's a little bit different, right? So I think that to Michael's point, what we want to do is we want to make sure that this is addressing the needs of our community here. Want to make sure that we're not stopping growth or making it too difficult to come up and want to build or, or to grow within Antioch because that's really what I think our community wants. What, I mean, I read, read it over and what I've seen is I don't think that it's too restrictive. I have a lot of questions and I think that I personally would like to see some things added, but from, to answer your question directly, I don't think that we're stopping or restricting too much here from what I saw. But I, again, I'm not an expert. I just work in the field.
So according to the rest of us, you're kind of an expert for us. Anything else?
I guess I'm trying to think about what other like special exceptions there would be. I saw like carnivals and stuff, but like, I don't know. I don't know why I would do this with that, but I just want to, like, I, I want to promote growth and I also want to not allow things that I'm not thinking.
Just for the record, obviously anybody, any developer has the opportunity or existing property has the opportunity to request relief. Okay. That's by, by nature, whether it's a variance or especially for developments, special use. As you know, we do a lot of our developments with PUDs. So especially for like a car dealership or maybe a use that has a little more intense illumination levels, I would expect probably some requests for relief. That would be expected. Maybe for some large master plan development PUDs, like a marketplace, they may incorporate relief from the get-go. So nothing precludes the applicant from asking for that relief, whether within terms of a PUD or a variance. So there, there will be exceptions and I think the board has historically tried to support, especially for economic development, supported relief when appropriate. So there are avenues to basically for a developer or existing property owner to ask for relief from this proposed ordinance.
I guess I'm mostly concerned with like too many exceptions, you know, so many things. That's all I have right now.
So we make a rule and then every time they come before us, we have an exception, which is what we've been doing with the sign ordinance for a while. So.
That's the best sign that you need in ordinance. If you're granting variances all the time, you have an ordinance that does, it's not working.
It's not working. Right. So. Any other questions?
So since I'm new, I don't know if this is already something that's in place, but in regards to the blinking and flashing lights, is that prohibited from bars and restaurants in town already?
Michael.
That's a really good question and I unfortunately have kind of a gray answer for you. So we do have provisions in the sign ordinance that prohibits that. So we have something in the sign. So we can say it's signage or an attention getting device. I can, we can issue them a citation. We generally don't do that. We try to work with them. So that's generally the answer. But if it's not signage per se, or it's not attention getting device, it's kind of a gray area. We don't have any specific prohibitions in the village's municipal code, other than our sign order.
So with this draft, under the regulations, it would prohibit?
Yes, it would clearly prohibit. Across the street, we have a restaurant that has some blinking lights and that would prohibit that.
This would also give us the opportunity to be able to go and have the conversation with them.
Right.
Because we don't have something in place presently to be able to address that. Any other questions? Ms. Manigan?
No.
I'm just concerned that we're gonna, we're now incorporating some language regarding signs right in here, as far as.
Right, you're right, there's language in there prohibiting basically the blinking.
Right, so now are we kind of crossing lighting ordinance with the sign ordinance?
There would be, there'd be some overlap. It's consistent, I mean, it's consistent, that language, I believe, in the sign ordinance. And this language is all inconsistent, again, trying to minimize that, what I call, for a simple term, attention-getting lighting. So it's whether the, you know, we all know what we're talking about, the blinking and which we. Right, while LED, the whole LED issue, that's probably a separate, that would clearly come under signage, okay? I don't think that would bleed into this lighting ordinance that, that's, you know, with regards to LED signs, that analysis completely comes under our sign ordinance. So we currently, as you know, regulate that. We have a very restrictive LED sign ordinance. We spend a lot of time talking about it.
It unfortunately gets overrun every time we have it come up, but, okay. So that the restrictiveness is there for us to work with if we have to. The other issue is obviously the light infiltration that comes from the signs, LED signage. I mean, that's something we got to address and look at, but this is, this is very specific to a whole property or something that's on a property that then is illuminating beyond and so on and so forth.
So Michael, do you think that then with this proposal and actually being able to address current existing properties that may have some light issues? So like, do you foresee someone saying, why aren't you getting into the car dealership, right? I mean, again, just kind of.
On a practical level, we, you know, that's a question, you know, whether they're legally not conforming, grandfathered in. You know, I think that's going to be, that's a really, really good question, a sensitive question. I think at the end of the day, I've been doing this long enough. I think economic development in some ways is going to trump regulations. Nobody's going to bring the hammer down on those car dealerships and tell them that you have to turn off, you know, turn off the lights, turn off all the lights and can't be any illumination. I don't think that's going to happen on a practical level. I may be wrong, but I just don't think that's going to happen. We, you know, obviously, but we want to work, but I think there's an opportunity to, you know, those, as you know, those dealerships were, well, constructed, what, the 60s? I don't know, going back some time, right?
Before that.
Yeah, before that. So I do believe there's an opportunity to do a better job with using current standards. So as we, you know, I think we did with the Kia development, used better standards than we did back in the 50s or 60s. As we, as new development comes in, I think there is an opportunity to be more, have more sensitive lighting.
Yeah, and I think, I think as a whole, like, I think especially on our board specifically, we always talk about lighting. And basically, so I think it may be a concern, I think, amongst residents, we all live, so. But when you also have the stipulation about those non-essential lights turning off at 11:00 PM, can I ask where the 11:00 PM came from? And when you say non-essential, is there a definition of non-essential?
Well, basically, safety lights, perimeter lighting. I think that, I'll be honest, I think that the dealerships are going to ask for relief. They're going to ask, be able to basically lighten their product, at least at a certain level. The question is, you know, is there a reasonable time that they stop illumination levels? I don't, that's what this discussion is for. What is reasonable? At 11 o'clock, there seem to be a, generally a lot of the ordinances I reviewed, 11 o'clock. 11 o'clock was consistent for the end of business hours. I think actually 11 o'clock maybe gives you more latitude than end of business hours, which in many cases is 8 o'clock. So I try to find a middle ground for that. So I pick the number, but it's, I guess my definition is arbitrary number. So that's really up for discussion, what you think is appropriate.
Yeah, because I just, you know, even like as a resident, right? We see updates to some departments as residents, issues around like outside lights running to safety, opening stuff in cars and all that. So I could see where a business would say, well, why should I turn off all my lighting, right?
Well, security lighting, perimeter lighting, security, anything to basically keep that security perimeter, like, you know, that, that, that's exempted. So obviously, for safety, security, that is not incorporated in what I call basically lighting for, whether it's lighting product. That's, so there is a distinction there.
Any further questions? Mr. Martinez?
Director, so by my understanding then, no property is grandfathered in. Any property that would need any type of adjustments, there's the opportunity for variances that.
Well, again, for the record, properties that are legally not conforming, I'll defer to their attorney, because there may be some legal limitations here. But generally, a property is legally, that's been grandfathered in, legally not conforming, there would be exemption unless we can show that it's nuisance. If it's a nuisance and it's causing issues, then we may have recourse to make them comply with our current ordinance.
And that's a different analysis than nuisance, you know, but yeah. So if you're working and it's okay, it would go back, it would revert and you could keep doing, if it ain't broke, you don't fix it. That's oversimplifying very much, but if it's a nuisance, it's a different analysis. And Michael and I need about that and regulate that in different ways. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Anything else, Mr. Martinez? Mr. Turner? Tagged, you're it.
No, mate, only written down five, so it'll be, I'll try to be quick. So I think just in general, like, when you talk about lighting, safety is the number one thing that pops up, right? It's always about safety, but there's areas where are overlit and then there's areas where are underlit. What I see across the United States and many cities is uniformity is the issue. Different color temperatures is the issue. You have super bright white lights, you have orange-looking lights that are high-pressure sodium, or they're the LED fixture, you know, lights that are made to look that way, like we have downtown here in Antioch. So really, well, I think like where my head goes with this ordinance is we should really be trying to understand what the feel of Antioch that we're looking for. Are we looking for a, you know, the streetlights when you drive downtown Main Street are, they're LED, I believe, but they're, they're that orange color, you know, that warm inviting look.
2,2400.
Yeah, yeah, so that was the first question is I don't see anything in color temperature in here. And I think that might be something that we look at and that we add to control that look. You know, we, my company operates in cities all over the country and we see lights turning purple and blue and green, LED lights failing, light outages, there's orange lights. So you're driving down the highway and it looks like Christmas and it's July. It's a problem, right? Now luckily, Antioch's a much smaller community, but you don't want to head down that direction. So I think nipping it now and saying what we're going to look for are certain color temperatures and uniformity will be key. I know when I drive downtown Main Street right now, you look through that little area, the walkway, when you're trying to walk behind the buildings and there's the string lighting, it looks really cool, but it's white light, it doesn't match the feel and the character of the downtown. So that would be one thing that I would say is uniformity and color temperature. Second thing I had.
So instead of 2,500 to 3,000, it's 5,000.
Yeah, it just, yeah, it doesn't.
Doesn't work.
Doesn't work, doesn't feel, right? The other thing, Michael, if I missed it, I'm sorry. I would, I would put something in here with, around sustainability. Really just addressing it, not, not saying that you have to, like, iron fist, but we're trying as a, as a, as a village, as a community, to look for sustainable options. We would really like everyone to go LED because there's, that's what it should be. I don't see anything in there either, so I'd say LED would definitely be something that I would steer everyone to just for the pure angle of reducing the load on the grid. I think ComEd would be super happy with that. And then also just the lifespan of the fixture itself. You're getting 10 years on LED fixtures today, so I mean, it definitely goes a long way.
Yeah, they cost more, but they last longer.
Correct. The third option, the third question I had, Michael's a question for you. So are we only talking about commercial? Are we talking about streetlight?
That's a really good question. I, to be honest, I left the street lighting provisions out. A lot of the ordinances have a lot of language about street lighting, i.e. public lighting.
Okay.
And that's something I didn't incorporate. I'd be more than happy to incorporate that, but that potentially could be a more sensitive area because now it's applicable to the village.
Correct.
And it could be, there'd be a cost aspect to that, to the village.
Correct. And I think where I would like to see something in here about it, I don't necessarily, again, we don't need to rule with an iron fist, but right now, the way I understand it is, is there's an outage and ComEd today has a crew that's available and they'll come over and put a fixture out. And so I'm driving around neighborhoods and some of them are underlit and some of them are overlit. And again, you have HPS fixtures that are orange, you have LED fixtures and you're starting to see as things are changed out, different color temperature all over the place. We should nip that now before it gets out of control. So that would be the one recommendation that I'd have if we're going to put any form of street lighting in here to start to put some form of standards around it. Now, however that works with the relationship between the village and ComEd is a whole nother discussion, but at least we could start to peel back that onion.
The only question I would have is, is the best location for that, and I believe that's a completely appropriate and great discussion, is the best location to have that in for a sign ordinance or subdivision code, if it relates to municipal?
The only, the only problem with the subdivision code is it's two new subdivisions coming in. So it has nothing to do with what we have existing and or replacement of existing lighting that we have in our subdivision present. So we almost have to address that as being street lighting as its own animal, separate from this, because this is more towards exactly what we've been discussing, which is commercial and, you know, larger facilities and coming in within our village. Great discussion. I think it's something that definitely we have to look at, but I don't think that that should be wrapped into this. I think it needs to be something separate.
Yeah, because then it's not just, it would not, in my mind, it would not just be neighborhoods. You're looking at just any roadway, Lake Street, Orchard Street.
New Park.
Yeah.
The New Park.
Anywhere.
Anything that we have for public lighting. And within the public lighting sector, you'd then subdivide that down to your roadways. You know, your subdivisions, then major roadways, downtown, how its district needs to be addressed on a continuous basis for its light temperature, color and replacements. Then that, that's its own little animal, definitely. I don't see trying to wrap this into this. This is nice, very nice, you did a great job, so.
There is on page three, it does specifically mention street lighting. Outdoor light fixtures, outdoor, it's not a street lighting, it's illuminated, devices in it, street lighting.
Mentioned it briefly, yes.
Yeah, very general, but I mean, some of these ordinances have literally pages, yes.
Yeah, right.
So like I said, I think that that's its own animal.
Yeah, I just.
Definitely should do it.
I just wanted to ask the question, wherever it lives, I have a lot of recommendations and questions and ideas around that. You know, the technology's changing today. I see certain cities and municipalities putting up fixtures that have the smart nodes and the Zaga ports. And you think about it, that's where you're putting up cameras and gunshot detection and all of the smart city things that people love to talk about. It's happening in a lot of major cities and they're using the street lighting for it. So getting ahead of it and putting in some form of standards. So what, Michael, whenever you want to have that discussion, I'd be interested in that. If it's here, that's fine, if it's somewhere else, that's fine as well. And then the last thing that I, that I have seen in some ordinances that I thought was interesting, if you do go down the path of street lighting, is a lot of areas have certain neighborhoods that are underlit. And so they have a line item in there that talks about equity and making sure that we are, we are introducing and, and looking at it from an equitable perspective within our own community. So not just this neighborhood yelled the loudest, we're going to go light them up more. We're going to look at it from the entire community perspective and we're going to make sure that we are addressing all the needs of the entire community.
So basically, similar to our community, Oakwood Knolls, an older, you know, subdivision that has virtually no lighting versus Tiffany Farms, which is, you know, well-lit but done, you know, mid 90s into the 2000s, different lighting. And then into the newer subdivisions where we're getting into the LEDs. So make it more consistent, make it more, you know.
Uniformity, resiliency, safety, it's all the buzzwords, I can sell it all. So. So that's really all that I had. I think that tonight was just specifically like ideas and conversation. Those are some of the things that I didn't see in there that the main thing is, is is the uniformity, the color temperature, the LED stuff is really what I would recommend that we try to tackle and we set as a standard. 15 years from now, everything's going to look the same, rather than it looking like Christmas. So that's all I have.
You sure? So I really like what you did with this. Yes, I think we should, you know, redefine it, look at it a little bit closer in a couple of areas. Definitely, street lighting is a separate animal. Public lighting, definitely a separate animal, leave that together, you know, in separate ordinance. Great job. The, 10 years ago, downtown Chicago had a municipal league conference. They were just starting to talk about public Wi-Fi and having it available in other areas throughout your community. And it was something that was cutting edge back then and nobody was even thinking it. But that can be coupled through the lighting and the fixtures we have throughout our community, be able to give that to certain areas and have it out there. I don't know that that's something that we're going to be able to do within, you know, the next five years or 10 years, but it's definitely something that we should be thinking about with whatever wiring we're going into for these fixtures, to have something available to control it, work with it. Go ahead.
It becomes a, so a selling, huge selling point. It becomes a huge revenue generator for the utilities and for the municipalities.
Thank you.
The information that is gathered on those, those networks, big corporations will come in and pay a lot of money for that information to figure out if they want to put another, say whatever big box store you want in that area, based on the type of people and the cars that are driving through and all that information. So it is an interesting point, that's all I'll say.
It also works for good public use, so gives people who don't have the opportunity to have Wi-Fi, an opportunity to have.
Well, just, it'll draw people to the downtown, right? It goes to increase the amount of people who want to live here.
Absolutely.
A lot of people work from home, get them to downtown, open their stores, get them to work hours.
This, 10 years ago, this was a discussion downtown that, I mean, Dorothy Larson was mayor and we were sitting there talking and it was something I went and watched and saw and listened to because it interested me. Unfortunately, I'm a geek when it comes to technology, so. And it's definitely coming into fruition in many, many communities and it's working, it's helping. It's helping grow the community and make it more accessible for everybody. Anyway, all right. What did you want us to do with this beyond that?
Well, what I'll do is I have some direction. I will bring back a refined ordinance and I can look at, I can look at how other villages have handled street lighting, whether, I think a separate document, whether we want to look at that in the future, if we want to have, there's guidelines or whatever, we bring that back and we can discuss where that, where the best placement is of that.
That sounds good. All right, looking for a motion to adjourn. Ms. Mannigan, seconded by Ms. Carsonson. Boy, we've got two of them, right on it. Road call.
Oh, hi.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.